We'll go ahead and get started this morning, and good morning to everybody, and welcome to the Community Development and Transportation Committee for December 15th, 2021. I would certainly acknowledge the elected officials who are present: Mayor Lori Henry, Councilmember Christine Hall, Councilmember Matt Judy, Councilmember Matthew Tyzer. The purpose of committee meetings are for the city departments to convey information to the mayor and council and discuss initiatives listed on the published agenda. By ordinance, the committee consists of the mayor, members of the city council, and the city administrator, and the ordinance also mandates the city administrator as the chair of committee meetings. This is a public meeting, however, it's not a public hearing. Therefore, while the meeting is open to the public, we do not take public comments or questions during committee meetings. Public comments or questions are received at the regular city council meetings on the second and fourth Monday of each month at 7:00 PM in the city council chambers, as well as on the fifth Monday of each month in open forum. We do encourage citizens to engage our online platforms, and if you have any questions or need information regarding any matter, our staff is always available to provide that information to you. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the Community Development and Transportation Committee meeting for November 17th, 2021. I will entertain a motion for the approval of those minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Motion by Councilmember Tyzer, second by Councilmember Judy. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you so much. Passes unanimously. For the record, we do not have any community development action items for this committee meeting, and we do, however, have transportation items, beginning with the second item listed on the agenda: Consideration of a Right-of-Way Checklist for Transportation Projects. Mr. Skalsky.
Good morning. This item, I hope, is fairly straightforward. We've prepared a draft checklist outlining our right-of-way acquisition process in response to some of the concerns outlined in the Gerard Davis report. There's a copy of the draft in your package. I do want to mention that there's one point that we noticed we are going to incorporate before we finalize this in our final review after we submitted the agenda package, and that will be, under the acquisition activities, we'll be adding a bullet that addresses feedback from the land acquisition manager in coordination with the engineering division manager and the engineer of record to make sure that those negotiations are reflected in the final plans. We were just talking about that this week. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you have.
Yes, Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I just had a question. I was researching something else, and I noticed that, I believe, we adopted a row policy last April or April of '21. Do we need to review our OW policy that we adopted then because that was before the report? I'm just throwing that out there, if we need to review that.
That's a very good point, and I will research that, and if necessary, we will do that, see if there's any inconsistencies that we can address and set aside and bring that back.
Any additional questions or comments for Mr. Skalsky? Seeing none, I believe that's an information item. Is that correct? Would you like to move that forward?
We had it in for an agenda vote, and simply, we would incorporate, we can incorporate it into the updates that we're providing, but I see no reason why we wouldn't bring it to you for an agenda vote.
Right. We'll ask for a motion to move that item forward.
Motion to move forward with the additional item that Mr. Skalsky mentioned.
All right, thank you. Motion by Councilmember Tyzer, second by Councilmember Judy. Any further discussion? All those, yes. Mayor Henry.
I just have one question. Are all of these operational issues?
Yes, ma'am.
So you don't need a vote of council. However, I would suggest that you put it on the agenda for, oh, well, you might not ever have an update again in the council meeting, so, because those updates will kind of go away with me, but I would suggest that you put it under transportation and give an update to the community in your regular updating and how we're dealing with the Gerard Davis report, how we're dealing with the transportation issues in general.
I think that's totally reasonable, and one of the things that we haven't totally figured out is we have a number of things that apply to our standard operating procedures, and we have a date set in March to provide a comprehensive update. The exact format of that, I haven't worked out yet with legal and the city administrator and, of course, the new council, but we want to be as formal and transparent about the whole process of how we're addressing this as possible.
So, yes, and I agree with that because we need to let the public know what we're doing to rectify the issues that we've got in City Hall, but what I don't want to do is get this council involved in voting on operational issues. So I will not support the motion because I do not support council getting involved in operations.
We do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion regarding the item? All those in favor? All those opposed?
Fails.
Fails. All right, thank you very much. The next item: Consideration to Adopt the Georgia Department of Transportation Utility Accommodation Policy and Standards Manual for Transportation Projects. Mr. Skalsky.
Okay, so for clarification, this one, we definitely do want an agenda vote for. And this is an item that also was pointed out in the Gerard Davis report. However, it is a broad, industry-wide issue in our transportation and construction business in general, and that is that utilities are very complicated in the metro area, and in 2016, the Georgia Department of Transportation produced a manual on how they wanted to try to streamline and organize that utility coordination process that has to precede most of their road work around the state. And in that manual, the reason we're doing this is because we deal with those same challenges at the local level, and I just want to read one sentence in the middle of paragraph two here, but the purpose of this, "The responsibility of regulating utilities on local roads and streets falls under the jurisdiction to ensure reasonable uniform practices throughout the state. The department encourages adoption of this manual for relocation, adjustment, and accommodation of utilities or a similar policy so long as it is not more restrictive than the department's in accordance with OCGA." Section 32, 442 and 32, 492. So the intent of that manual was really to make it feasible for local governments to also adopt a similar policy. A couple of local governments have done that already, Cobb and Gwinnett, most notably. In your package, we've included Cobb's adoption of that policy, and for the most part, they've adopted the state policy, which is not in your package because it's a 280-page manual, but they've adopted it pretty much in total with some changes in definitions and then exempting certain sections that they don't feel are appropriate to the local government. So there's, you know, like a 10-page item that they have passed. That's exactly what we would like to bring forward after working out the details with legal. I think it'll mirror the Gwinnett policy, with the exception that we're a city, and they're a county, and a handful of other things that we might choose to deviate on, but we would highlight all of those. I think this is a really important policy that gives the city legitimate legal recourse under state law to work out agreements with utility companies and have those utility companies bound to those agreements in the execution of their work, which is a critical path item for our transportation projects, as we've seen on our own. It's an important part of our projects to make sure that utility work gets done, and it's a really important part of our contractors' agreements that they can actually coordinate with those utilities. Us having the ability to work out those agreements in advance and hold utility companies to those commitments is what this policy would allow us to do. So with that, I think it's very important and hopefully support us in adopting that so that we can get a little better coordination and cooperation from our utility partners. Any questions?
Yes, Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Dan. Hey, I do have a question. Is this something, and I think, I think it sounds like a great policy, and I'm going to support it, but we've done this, have we not, with utilities? Like, for example, when we did that roundabout at Land O' Lakes North Coleman Road, did we coordinate with the utilities and have an agreement where they either paid us or we paid them, or is this, is this what this speaks to on a more formal level?
Yes, ma'am. We've always coordinated with the utilities extensively. The challenge is that there are often competing priorities, and everyone has had to deal with challenges with labor and schedules during, especially during the last couple of years. It's gotten probably more serious during COVID. What this does is standardize and formalize that process and also clarifies that, once those agreements have been worked out, that utilities can be held accountable for doing what they've agreed to do by our contractor. That gives our contractor the recourse, basically, to not be responsible for delays that are caused by the utility companies if they can't do that work on time.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Skalsky?
Move to approve.
All right. Motion to approve by Mayor Henry, second by Councilmember Judy. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. That passes unanimously. The next item is Consideration of a Blanket Approval to Perform Right-of-Way Acquisition Services and Accept Right-of-Way Options for the State Road 92 at Woodstock Road Intersection Improvement Project in an Amount Not to Exceed $70,000. Mr. Skalsky.
So this is a project that we have completed, our, the initial parts of our right-of-way acquisition process, and we've identified two parcels that we believe we will impact, and this is the corner of Woodstock and Crossville Road. Could you just point to the general area where the parcel's on? It's on the southeastern corner there, yeah. And we've got a drawing in your package as well. I wanted to show the aerial version. And this is the standard process that we go through. We've had appraisals completed, and we believe that a budget of $70,000 should accommodate those with a blanket negotiation process that we will begin as soon as that funding is authorized. Questions?
Yes, Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Dan. I'm very excited that we're going to finally see this, but I did want to just confirm, we did discuss, and I want to make sure the plan is to continue the sidewalk on that side all the way down to the corner, to the end of, or to Crossville, where Woodstock meets Crossville.
Yes, please.
That request was made for the King Road project, and yes, that is happening. This is just for the northbound right turn lane on Woodstock.
All right. Any further questions or comments regarding this item? Seeing none, is there a motion to move forward?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Tyzer, second by Councilmember Judy. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you so much. That approval is unanimous. Item number five: Consideration of a Modification to the Policy Regarding Placement of Objects or Structures As Defined and Set Out in the Charter for the City of Roswell, Chapter 2.20, 31, 31, Within the City of Roswell Rights of Way to Allow Private Security Cameras. Mr. Skalsky.
So this item has come up in discussion recently related to security cameras, which have been requested to be placed in the right-of-way by at least one HOA that I know of. There may have been others that have expressed interest, and we're aware that, we believe, some have been put up without talking to the city across the city. One of the points that needed to be cleared up is that, back in April of 2021, the city did have a policy that was put in place regarding objects in the right-of-way. It did specifically mention security cameras, but at the time, this issue wasn't clear enough or well-understood, and it was not the subject of that policy being developed by legal. It was general objects in the right-of-way that it come up on for other reasons, not security camera-related. So at that point, the policy specifically did not apply to security cameras, and the paragraph that is in bold on your screen mentions security cameras in the tail end of that sentence, "If such security cameras are approved pursuant to a separate policy." And in reviewing that policy today with the specifics of a real example to work through with how security cameras would go about being installed by a community, HOA in the community, and being reviewed by the city, we realized there really isn't much else that needs to be changed in that policy except to remove the requirement of a separate policy being established. It should follow the same policy as any other object in the right-of-way, and we just needed to provide a few guidelines that were very specific to how security cameras would be handled. And so that's what this item does. It provides a slightly modified version of the policy that was adopted in April 12th, 2021, and we would simply delete that one requirement for a separate security camera policy. And if you could, yeah, thank you, Rob, you've already called up the encroachment permit. This is an existing permit that we use to approve activity in the right-of-way already, and it's been modified to make some specific references in the fine print. There's a few references that we're going to have need to point to, but basically, we've got a little bit of mention in the first paragraph, and the second paragraph has been cleaned up, and we added a section in here to mention security cameras. And a key point here is that this would be at no cost to the city and that the city's police department would have access to recorded footage for a period of 30 days or anything that they maintain archived upon request. So that was one of the issues that needed to be cleared up, is access to the information by PD. PD would love to have that. Most HOAs that have expressed interest have said that would be fine with them and the vendors that typically provide these services. And that's all I'll say for the moment and address questions because I see them already.
Yes, Mayor Henry.
One thing that I would like to see further discussion on is, it isn't as it seems. It's not the HOAs going up by security cameras and putting them in public right-of-way. It's private enterprise, and these are revenue generators, so very similar to the other utilities that we have in our right-of-way. We've got private companies, I know one, and it is making money because they've set up the cameras in our right-of-way, and then they charge the HOA. I think it needs to be considered that we charge the company to place the items in our right-of-way, just like we do for all of the other utilities. So I think we should consider that because this, we are supporting private businesses here.
Let's make a note of that, and I'll take some other questions.
Yes, Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, thank you, Dan. And when we, this went through many iterations, I remember, and Mr. Halsey was the one drafting, drafting the policy, and a lot of discussion back in the spring, earlier this year, and going back to last year, 2020. One of the, the reason that it was penned this way was there were certain members, perhaps in, within the HOA, that perhaps have issues with a security camera, and I believe that the reason that we deferred it to HOA having approval from their association, did we not, as one of the conditions? I mean, we would allow it as part of our policy, but beyond that is outside of the city, I mean, what the government should be doing. I'd like to just debate that or discuss that a little bit more.
Okay, so those are two great topics, and I will just maybe say a couple of things. If we go to the checklist, actually, or you were going to go here? A couple of the key points that we wanted to address, just what's important about these kinds of applications, if and when we get them, and this is a right-of-way encroachment checklist that our traffic group came up with, not just for poles in the right-of-way necessarily, but part of it does include the HOA support documentation. I think down there, applicant has submitted proof of support, 65% petition of affected residents, a number of other considerations. So to your point, there's two things that I want to mention. One is the right-of-way side of this, which is certainly the city's ownership and control, and do we want to make that a revenue-generating function or not? That's a reasonable question, and we'll talk with legal and give that further discussion going forward. We did have just a simple application fee in this, so not a stream of revenue. From the implementation standpoint, one of the complications we ran into with an applicant is oftentimes the right-of-way line is not precisely defined in GIS and really requires a survey to define that, and in many cases, if the property owner that's adjacent to the right-of-way and the city are both willing to have the pole on their property, if our right-of-way policy permits that and the adjacent property owner's permission is also granted, it makes it much easier for the installation process to go forward without the requirement for a legal survey, let's say, of exactly where that stake needs to go. So that just makes it much more flexible from a logistical standpoint for the location of cameras. And I just wanted to point that out because that was something I didn't really anticipate until we started looking into a real example, that the cost of a survey is just one more cost and obstacle to doing these, and that was brought up to us by the HOA. And with that, I just wanted to make those couple of comments about how we've addressed it thus far, and we can certainly look at it again. I think I addressed your comment, question there, I'm not sure I did yours, Councilmember Hall, could you repeat yours?
I, I guess I'm struggling to understand what, what lacks in our current, what are we adding or what is changing that can or cannot be done with this proposal?
We would permit staff to approve installation of security cameras within the city's right-of-way without having to come through mayor and council as part of our normal right-of-way activity checklist. So that's, that's the fundamental point here, is we would be permitting, we'd have a process to permit cameras going up on poles in our right-of-way.
But don't we already have that with this policy?
Not until we delete that line that refers to a separate policy that addresses security cameras specifically, and we could still do that, we just thought it would be simpler to modify the existing policy, and if there's more that we want to work out in a specific security camera policy, we would have to work out more of those details and bring it back to you. I just think we have at least one very interested community HOA that would like to move forward with this and has worked with us for some period of time to make this request.
So just to follow up, the HOA, anytime they do a capital improvement or do something, the presumption is that they have the majority of the HOA members approving it? So this is just eliminating the extra needed that it, depending on the type of object they're putting in the right-of-way, that we're not going to require to see that second document that most of the HOA has approved it? Is that it?
I think we would want to see that vote or discussion or documentation that the HOA has the support of the community. I think that's our normal process, correct? Yes.
So to clarify, the, the existing policy, which, which was intended to support security cameras as well, has one sentence that basically made it difficult, and really, your request is to delete, to delete that one sentence to make it more operable?
Yes, sir. I understood you correctly. If I may, Dan, it still would require 65% of the HOA members to provide that level of approval, if you will, for this item. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Councilmember Judy.
Thank you. So you mentioned a little bit earlier, having spent some recent time with the police and listening to them, I want to make sure that if this happens, that if there's a license plate reader attached to the security camera, et cetera, we do have access through the police department. You mentioned that.
Yes, it is specifically required as part of the permit, and that is the one request that Chief Conroy was very supportive of. He supports the general concept, and he likes the idea of, via the private computer in the HOA, just for data management.
Having spoken to them, they were telling me that, you know, they've already caught some people on, based upon that, and in real time, so that's very important as part of this.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments from Mayor and Council? All right. Is there a motion to move this forward at this time?
It's moved.
That was a motion from Councilmember Tyzer, second from Councilmember Judy. Any further discussion? Yes, Mayor Henry.
I would just like to say again, I support this. This is great, but for the record, there is a company that is installing cameras. They are actually encouraging HOAs not to come to the city, that they can just go ahead and put these up in the city right-of-way, and they are generating revenue for themselves. So I really think that it would behoove the city to look at an agreement with these companies that they would pay us a fee, however we work our normal utilities in the right-of-way, whether it's cable, you know, all of the utilities that we locate in the right-of-way that pay fees, I, I think this should be considered. And then I also don't know if there's, it And then I also don't know if there's, it kind of reminds me of the basement remodelers that they'll go in and remodel a basement in a subdivision and don't get any permits, and that's kind of like the underground thing, it's like, yeah, we can get it done, we're not sitting getting involved. So I don't know if there's any kind of code enforcement that can be done, because it really disturbs me, because we have these regulations for a reason. And then I have been here, when we've had to go into the right-of-way and remove something, and, you know, then the folks, the innocents, are up in arms because it's like, well, you know, nobody told us this, because the city was never involved in it originally. So I would just really like to see further discussion on that with the security cameras.
Yes. Councilmember Palermo.
Yeah, Mayor Henry, I appreciate you bringing that to our, to our attention, because I'd say, if we're going through all this trouble of creating a, in the right-of-way and security camera policy back in April, and now we're updating it now, my expectation is certainly that we don't have for-profit companies that are just intentionally subverting our policies and things like that. So I think that is, I think that is an issue that we have to, we have to address, because this certainly could be a nuisance on, on property owners or HOAs that aren't, aren't fully wanting it, and making sure we have the right procedures in place, given, given it could be an invasion of privacy, depending on the location. So I think it is important that we have a policy and that the for-profit companies aren't, aren't making money off, off going around it.
Councilmember Tizer.
Question for Mr. Petty. If we, if we adopt this, we now have a process that requires permit and ordinance that requires them to get that permit. If the, if that ordinance is violated, what would the penalty for violation be?
So right now, it's a, I'd have to go look at the ordinance. It's a policy and not an ordinance necessarily, but it would certainly give us more of an ability to go in and now regulate these ones that we know are out there, that have just gone on. And I would have to look at...
Well, we had an ordinance.
We may. This is the policy, but it may refer back to ordinance. But if it's a violation of ordinance, it's a technically a $1,000 fine for each individual incident.
Right. Right. And so while, you know, coming up with some way to collect some sort of franchise fee or whatever, you know, you'd want to call that in the future, the issue of somebody putting them up without going through this process, there would be a penalty.
Yes, Council, yes, Mayor Henry, I'm sorry.
But I want to be clear, because, okay, Mr. Skalsky, the HOA applies for this, correct?
That's what's happened thus far.
So the HOA would actually be the offender for the $1,000 fine if we do have an ordinance. And what my issue is, because I think nine times out of 10, these HOAs are innocent in this, they, they don't know. So I think somehow we need to find the company accountable for it, because they're the ones that are going around the approval process.
Yes. Councilmember Judy.
So Matt and I aren't going to be able to vote on this, or Mayor, so do y'all want us to defer this? Because this is really y'all's issue now.
We have a, we do have a motion and a second on the table at the moment. And unless Councilmember Tizer, I believe, made the motion, unless she wants to amend the motion, or we can call for the vote on the motion.
I'm wondering with Mr. Skalsky, the timeline, is it basically we have, we have an HOA that's urgently wanting to see this get addressed, and...
Yes, we do. So the residents in Willow Springs have brought forward a proposal with specific locations, numbers of cameras, and the details are included in your package. All of those locations have been reviewed by our department, and we're comfortable with their general location. The issue came up really when we started talking about the specific locations, and did they need to get a survey to decide whether they were in the right-of-way and which ones were and which ones weren't? And we've worked out a number of the details of that with them, and they're ready to go and have that installed, subject to the approval of this particular policy.
So ba, based on that and based on Councilman Judy's very reasonable question and thought, I lean towards thinking we move this, we do move this forward to a council meeting, and we just ask staff to make sure that they, that they update each elected official prior to that meeting, just to, just to share the concerns as well as any, just any different thoughts, if there are any updates needed for that council meeting.
Any further comment? Yes, and Mayor Henry, can you turn on your microphone? Yes, thank you.
And I would support moving this forward with the considerations that we've raised. However, I would like to ask, Mr. Petty, if, so for example, we move this forward, an HOA gets permission from us, they filed an application, and we permit it, then we determine at a future date that private companies for private enterprise will have to pay us a fee. Would they be exempt because we allowed this at this point?
They wouldn't be exempt, because this is a permit that we could sort of, we could rule at any time, essentially, as opposed to a license.
Okay. Well, yeah, my only concern is that's going to be, I don't want to hold this up. However, my concern is, we're really, once again, punishing the wrong people. So HOA applies for this, then we, we grant it, then we get into a issue with the private company that is doing this, and we pull the permits. I'm just wondering, who's being punished by it? So, but, you know, I'll leave that up to you all.
Councilmember Tizer.
So let me make, let me make the suggestion that in the future, I think Mr. Petty made a great distinction between permit and a license. And if in the future you want to choose to license certain companies to do this, then create that, just like you license certain cable companies to operate in certain parts of the city. But I think that's just, you know, in this case, we have, one, it's a separate situation. If you wanted to, you know, do licensing and you pulled that person's license, then the HOA would just transfer over to whoever the new licensed organization was. So I think they're, they're two separate things, and I'd certainly like to see them, you know, be able to move forward with this. They, I know there's been some issues, some criminal activities that they believe that this would help them solve, and I, as I've heard from Councilman Judy, so does the police department.
Dan, any other further comments or comments from your staff?
I think we have the direction. Rashaba, did you have a comment you want to make, please?
I think I remember somewhere in the permit, it talks about if the applicant should be truly or a non-for-profit, so, not a, like, for-profit agency.
So we'd have to make some modifications if we dealt directly with the companies.
But that's not their business model. Their business model is to sell their services to the HOA, then the HOA comes in and applies for the permit. We do not require the, quote, license holder or the business to apply for the permit.
Understood. And I understand the concerns, and I think we can address that when we bring it back to full counsel after consultation with legal to address the fees, the sort of franchise control and the enforcement points that have been mentioned today.
Yes, I think that would be certainly prudent before it's brought to the council for full consideration and approval. So we did have a motion by Councilmember Tizer in the second, by Councilmember Judy to move this item forward. Did have a very good and robust discussion. Motion still is on the table, and so with that, any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor? All right. Thank you so much. It passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. And with that, that concludes the agenda for the Community Development and Transportation Committee. I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
I would like to, well, go ahead, Mr.
Motion to adjourn.
I'd like to second his motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilmember Judy, second by Councilmember Tizer. All those in favor? Thank you so much. Have a wonderful day.